Okay, we'll try again. Item number one is meeting with town council to obtain legal advice pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A and three, and Suffolk Construction versus DKM four forty-nine, Mass. four forty-four, parentheses, two thousand and seven, regarding potential litigation with Joseph Hennessy in pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A seven, to comply with or act under authority of any general or special federal grant in aid requirements, specifically the public records law, general law, chapter four, section seven, parentheses, twenty-six, to discuss privileged communication from town council regarding such potential litigation. Item number two is discussion regarding collective bargaining strategy for negotiation with AFSCC Council ninety-three, local three thirty-five, the DPW bargaining unit pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A and three.
Excellent, thank you. And I do show the player that we need to discuss these two items in executive session to protect the bargaining position of the town. So I would move that we go into executive session rather second.
Executive.
All in favor?
Aye.
All is five zero, Diane.
Okay, I got it.
Actually, Mr. Chair, just do a roll call vote. Has to be a roll call vote to go into exec.
Oh, is that right? I thought it was because of being on Zoom. Okay, the roll call, then.
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Mary?
And I am, I as well.
I'm this here.
Thank you, Chris. And you got the recording up, Diane?
I'll pause the recording now.
Good, thank you, Diane.
Yeah.
All right, welcome, everybody, to the Select Board Open Session on March seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. And I'd like to start the meeting by having Assistant Town Administrator read the open session agenda. Is she turning back on now?
The recording's on, yes.
All right, please read the open session agenda.
Okay, good evening. After I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I don't have any requests for public comment tonight. Items can be taken out of order, and topics not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the American Rescue Plan Funding Update, ARPA, and authorized use of funds to offset the proposed twenty-five capital. Item number two is consideration of support of various town FY twenty-five operating budgets. Item number three is consideration of support of various town FY twenty-five capital appropriations. Item number four is consideration of support of the twenty-twenty-four annual town meeting warrant articles. Item number five is consideration of filing special legislation as approved at the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, special town meeting, a revised establishment of the Northwater Sewer District, and to deposit the revised final document with the Sheriff and Town clerk. Item number six is the consent agenda, which is a payroll warrant, consideration of appointment to Building Inspector alternate Bob Fogarty, acknowledgement of request for the transfer of a comprehensive permit for Coolidge Crossing, and the FY twenty-five budget representative to James Arena DeRosa. I messed that one up, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Diane.
Yeah.
Revisions proposed agenda. That's right. Hearing none, do I have approval? Um, give a revision?
Doesn't matter, I don't know if you want to change five and six, but, because I'm going to walk out of five, just on this long term.
Well, that's fine.
You don't need me for six or anything.
I don't, I don't think so, okay. Okay, so, hearing none, do I have approval of the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Don't need to be roll call.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, I'm assuming Maryam is a second. And now you probably want to do a uniform vote, right? Something.
We did, but pause on here, we already voted on the crew agenda, you mean?
Yeah.
Can I not handle it, right?
Aye. Usually, you ask for, you know, a second. I know, but no one, did anyone move that who seconded?
Let's start over again. Do we, do we have a motion respecting agenda?
Go for it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first item is the ARPA funding update. And do you want to share that one, favor, you think?
That might be more confusing than.
I know, I know. You and I, you and I had that discussion this afternoon. So if you want to just describe where we are, we, we talked about this. This is sort of a, sort of an accounting summary of where we've done with ARPA funds, but this will tie exactly to the total cost of each budget. Some of them are, some projects are funded by ARPA and by the earmark and even some additional town money, so we have three sources of funding for the project. So this is an accurate source of fund statement, but not an accurate project statement, is what I would say. So you want to?
Sure, yeah, just in summary, you know, we, we, at your last meeting, two projects that were funded by ARPA, you closed out essentially and reallocated those monies to the kitty, to the pot, giving, you know, unspoken for a balance of ninety-one thousand fifty dollars, but it's not then dedicated or moving towards any particular project, nor is it tenanted to earmark for any project. But that leaves five projects currently that are active, ARPA-funded projects, with even Leland Water, G I S Inventory, the transformation of the town campus, the irrigation of rural fields, and the Farm Pond Stormwater. Those are the five active ARPA projects that still have balances to spend, that are still ongoing. But you have, in the status of each of those, so Woodhaven, Leland, that, that project is slated for construction this summer. That has three sources of funding currently, ARPA funds, earmark, and supplemental funding proposed at spring town meeting, all of which would be spent this summer once the project is constructed. The G I S Inventory has a balance of about forty-five hundred dollars, of which there's an intern currently working, and it should spend those funds by later this spring, and that will finish out that project. Transformation of town campus has a balance left of ARPA funds of ninety-three thousand. Of that, a significant portion is to be spent on replacing the stairway in front of the library. Current estimates for that work are about eighty thousand. So a significant portion of the town campus fund will be due less early soon in the expansions of those stairs. We will be having the town campus landscaping roads come before you when I come to get some more updates. The irrigation of rural farms has a balance in ARPA funds available, and you've also voted those funds, and they're available, and you've also set aside some funds, a hundred and ninety thousand. Unfortunately, the, the next step on that project is to get a vendor out to do the CO2 production enhancement of the wells. And we've been having a difficult time getting that vendor out, but they are scheduled to come out next week to do that, and then we'll have a much better water can be supplied from those wells, and would ask the Red Commission after that to give an update as far as the future of that project, and whether they would be requesting further funds. And then the Farm Pond Stormwater project, that's the access improvements down to Farm Pond Beach and associated stormwater improvements as well. The ARPA funding that you've dedicated was for design. That design is essentially completed, and some of the permitting is started, and that design will be brought forward to the Select Board for review in early April. And tentatively, the construction cost estimate for the work is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, so certainly beyond the scope of what ARPA could afford. So that is another project that you earmarked another thirty thousand dollars for that. Sort of uncommitted, but earmarked.
And isn't it also in the capital plan we're going to look at, submitted for this year?
That one is not.
Not, okay.
The only one of those that I mentioned that has supplemental funds requested is for the Woodhaven-Leland Water Project, which is asking for supplemental funds at town meeting, seventy-five thousand. And currently, that's slated to be exempted yet.
So if we have a balance of ninety-one thousand, we could reasonably just reallocate seventy-five thousand of that towards the Woodhaven-Leland project, right?
Correctly. Like a no brainer.
Except that we can save taxpayers and use this one for project.
Yeah, we already discussed.
I mean, we're already committed to doing the project, right? So it's like, yeah, there's no scenario where that's not going to get approved at town meetings. And, you know?
There's several projects that fall that category, because the digit to base town records, I think it's also three budget sources too, that the town.
It was up to your last meeting where you sort of, the ARPA funding, put it back.
Right.
But on the bottom of the sheet, and what makes it a little confusing, I was sorry, the balances, some earmarks outside of ARPA, those being the earmark portion, the state earmark portion for the Woodhaven-Leland, water project, intersection with town records, waterfront base plan, or Farm Pond. Those are earmarked projects, and some of those also have additional funding sources. There's a, there's a lot going on in this, but, I mean, the, the bottom line is, is an opportunity for you to reappropriate those to offset a capital project request this spring. I mean, obviously, I've been advocating to do this from the very beginning of ARPA, so obviously, pleased as punch that we're finally doing this, so nothing need anything more for me.
No, I think we just need to decide which project, you know, not, not.
Well, certainly, Leland, isn't Leland Farms kind of a no brainer here? I mean, it's very close to total amount.
Yeah.
It gives you residual about, I don't know, eighteen, sixteen, whatever it is, I think it had sixteen thousand additional dollars, which one could actually maybe, because Woodhaven will probably have change orders once you start to execute it, are we willing to dedicate the entire remaining, or if you wanted to spend the sixteen, then distribute among, again, I would only advocate either a full, either already approved town meeting or proposed town meeting capital.
Yeah, yeah, that's, but I don't think we're ready to make the motion, which one to get tonight, just know we're aware.
I'm ready.
Well, I think we can do the seventy-five for Leland, not the remaining sixteen, who just leave an allocation.
Gets me off the stage, it's not me.
Because spoiler alert, when we talk about the, when you talk about the capital budget and the article articles, I'm going to deny our vote against Leland Farm, the water supply based on this. I do not want that authorized.
All right, that's fine.
Because then you can double dip.
That's fine, all right. So do we want to take a vote on this now, or do you want to do it when it's a capital budget? We need to do it here, where we're in.
Thanks, Stephen, for the motion. I'm seconding it.
All right, so all in favor of allocating, I guess, what's the amount, seventy-five thousand?
Well, do you want to do, you want to do a little different with seventy-five? You want to give them some thought in there? Just want to cut it right to seventy-five? What's your thoughts on what?
Never, never.
I know. I'll dedicate the whole ninety-one, but unless, unless you think you need, I need a couple grand here and there to finish up the other things, I guess let's do seventy-five.
Right. It balances the capital request, we have a capital request, you add amounts, so.
Seventy-five.
I think I just know. The capital request is going away.
Right, right.
That's, right. Seventy-five is fine, I mean, we'll be back again, and we'll see, you know, what happens in rural fields and the wells, you know, if you find a hundred and ninety thousand of ARPA funds available.
Right.
The Farm Pond Stormwater, thirty thousand earmark, is certainly not, it's a far cry from what we need for construction, so.
Yeah.
That might be available, but it's just not available.
And we've, we've also attained the goal of pretty much being nailed down with ARPA. By the end of two thousand and twenty-four, we have to have identified and contracted for all the projects we're going to allocate, so I think we're, we're there essentially. Then we have another year, I believe, to spend the money, don't we, a year or two?
No, it looks like it's a great idea, I'm sure the five bucks is two years ago.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to second, isn't it?
The motion to second is just to, I don't see seventy-five thousand, is that correct?
That's right.
All right, so we have to finish that. All in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero, Diane. All right.
So we can actually strike that from the, from the warrant.
Yes.
I think that didn't link us there yet.
All right, very good. So we're now, before we get to that, now we're going to talk about the operating budget. Jeremy prepared a full budget, but also a little PowerPoint with a summary of the budget issues, we have that, it's about a four, four page. You sharing that, Jeremy?
Yeah.
We don't have to go through the numbers if you want to just discuss it, that's fine with me. We have the operating budget, the total budget for fiscal year twenty-five is three point seven five percent increase over fiscal year twenty-four. And it has, you know, the graph and the key other details, the last page.
The graph is the one I want. That's the one you should put up there, the one that shows.
The graph?
Yeah, instead of our.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even where we thought we were going to be using it for excess living capacity.
Well, we don't have petroleum, but it looks like the Matterhorn.
That is very.
Going from block diamonds down to intermediate.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a body slope.
Right.
So congratulations, Jeremy, to the finance, to the advisory committee, to everybody who's helped make that happen.
We should thank the state health insurance group also, that would bring me some, if I'm not mistaken. All right, so you're fine with the, there's nothing to discuss or approve there, I don't think, we're just considering the operating budget.
Yeah, so this, this is a general summary of, of the budgets that generally follow in the Select Board?
Yes.
It's also in your packet.
Well, I think we, one of the purposes of this meeting is to figure out, what are we going to do at the advisory hearing?
That's fine.
And I think, therefore, I want to make a motion, we support the budget of the departments under the jurisdiction of the Board of Select as set forth in Jeremy's report.
Well, this, this summary page actually is all the budgets, not just the ones you're talking about.
But those will come up when we, when we discuss them under the town meeting warrant articles, wouldn't they? You know what I'm trying to say, so we as Select Board endorse the Select Board budget, but then we're going to come in a couple articles, the various budgets under town meetings, like school, we can say, we don't support that, or whatever, you know what I'm trying to say?
That's fine, yeah, yeah, that's fine, all right, so.
Yeah, the difference for, for me is that I, I'm, I'm not sure it's my role to advocate that schools get more money, more percentage, my, my role is to advocate that police get funded, and BPW gets funded.
But you, you will be asked, under, under the school budget, in a couple articles, whether you support that or not.
Yeah.
I, I understand.
We, we approve both, I guess I would say, but we're more directly involved in the Select Board.
That's why, I just.
So you made a motion to approve the submitted budgets for the Select Board Department?
That's like phase one.
All right, so we have a second, a second for that.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero, Diane. We're not very good at this in person, so.
I want to. That's why I know what you do all of free time, you Chanel dog, you can talk.
I know, I know, I go, bet the cap.
Let's see, for a good hour.
All right, the next item is the fiscal twenty-five capital appropriation, for which we also have a PowerPoint summary, and then we have the detailed capital items list, some of which are funded by exempt borrowing, some are funded by free cash, and some are, I guess this is just from general appropriations, the third category. So do you want to go through each item by item, that I can refer to the capital?
Well, can I make a suggestion, that, because I was going through this, that I was thinking, we're also going to make a request to the General Court for earmark funds, and to ensure that we get earmark funds, so I don't want to be asking, it looks like a Farm Pond Watership based plan, if we get an earmark for that, then I don't want to support it as an additional free cash.
But the problem with that, though, is the timing, we won't know the earmarks before town meeting, so we have to decide if we're supporting this, is that correct, Sean?
Well, something similar, because that happened with Leland Wood, where we had like two hundred and fifty thousand. We later got, I mean.
Yeah.
Then we later got the ARPA, the, the other batch, and then we gave back.
I, I think we should.
Next town meeting, we gave some back.
I think we should vote for the capital item itself, because we also remember this year, the governor cut by fifty percent the number of our earmarks out to the pack, and pulled the one for the three hundred and fifty celebration.
Can we draft an article simply says, like, it basically doesn't count if we get earmark? You know what I mean? More technical.
Yeah, and that's what we've done in the past, is, you know, you, you just don't even talk about earmarks, and it's just that this is a thing that the town needs, should, does the town think that we should pay for it? Yes, we should. And then in the coming weeks and months, we may discover, oh, we have an alternate source of funding for that, so the amount of money that was voted at town meeting isn't needed, so you don't borrow the full amount, or if it was a free cash thing, you don't spend the free cash on it, but.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think it's, it's, to me, it's a lot more preferable to say, okay, this is a thing that we need, we're approving it, there is the possibility of extra money, so there's some redundancy there, as opposed to saying, all right, this is a thing we need, but we might get money for it, so why don't we not approve it? And then the money doesn't come through, now suddenly, we can't have the thing.
Yeah, that's, in other words, it's a funding source, it's just another funding source. We want the project, and then absent the fact, we care, we either borrow, or do it free cash, or do it with the earmarks or whatever, it's a funding source. So I would suggest we go through these capital projects one by one.
Stupid question, want to do the Select Board ones first, or the ones under the Select Board, I guess it doesn't matter.
These are actually categorized by how they're funded.
Those must leave the part.
So what, yes.
I would just go down in order, it's not like, it's not like we're going to not talk about any of those.
No, I know, but they are, the first ones are exempt borrowing. So the first item is Pine Hill School HVAC, we've heard the presentation on that, is there any discussion on that? So we, what about if we do this, why don't we go down through the first bucket of borrowing, exempt borrowing, see if there's any questions, then vote on the total, yeah, instead of voting on each individual one, if that makes sense to you.
So I'm just going to talk about one of them, and then Sean will talk again.
So is there any questions or debate on the DPW projects? There's three of them, DPW, dump truck, snow fire, roadway management, and stormwater in discussion or?
So, I, John, do you listen to? I do think we should reduce the roadway management. Sorry.
Okay.
Honest, we haven't spent much of last year's. On the five-year plan, it's two fifty in perpetuity. I actually want to talk to Dan about transitioning that into operational budgets. I know you talk about bonding, how bonding, you know, people who are, live here ten years from now, don't have it, whatever else. But if you're doing the same bonding amount every single year, it's nothing but like a backwards override for an operational fund, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's true.
And I, I, I want to transition the two fifty into an actual operating budget. If we need it, we need it, and I trust we need it, and I was like, Sean is the best user of these funds that I've, I've seen ever since I've been working here, I, I've, you know, been involved with the town whatsoever, I'll actually say that, but I am worried because these are all overrides. We haven't spent much of last year's, we're getting a little bonus chapter ninety from the millionaire's tax, that I think would be a good statement on a tight year, and yes, I know we're in a buddy slope now, if we actually reduced the roadway management. And I'm the biggest advocate, when we first came there, I was the strongest advocate for the roadway management when we first started, but.
Well, adding to your comment, this summer, we also.
I'm screwing my street.
We also have the roundabout project in there in terms of roadway.
And that's another thing, so, you know, DPW's going to be focused on that, and a lot of things, they're going to have half a million dollars to spend between this year's and last year's, we're at a high bonding amount right now, it's effective, you know, they all get overridden, and we're going to be looking at two fifty in perpetuity, which is going to be a backwards way for an operational override.
So give a proposal amount that you think is appropriate?
I think one fifty would be appropriate, unless, unless, and I'm sure, I'm sure I'm doing this as well, and as I drive around town, I see nothing broken guardrail, it's going to go into people's cars.
All right, let me, let me ask, why is the roundabout included, why is roadway management in the capital budget? Why isn't the roundabout, or, or projects like the roundabout?
It's in there, that's already approved last year.
Yeah.
The roundabout's already in there, we got state funding and.
Oh, so that's, so this roadway management is roadway management?
Yeah.
So why is it in the capital?
It always is.
It's an annual request.
It's an annual amount of payment.
About five years ago, Sean, did, have hired a consultant to do a payment management study in the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which came up with an estimate to, you know, essentially maintain your roadway with slight improvement of quality, and it suggested a funding of five hundred thousand dollars per year, which is where the two fifty came from, because we get two hundred and fifty thousand from the state, and the balance is locally funded, it's two fifty, so to stay on track with your payment condition, that study, the consultant suggestion, would spend as three hundred thousand dollars per year. And I'd like to talk to Dan also, about rolling that two fifty into the operation, I mean, you know, I might do it in one year, we might do it over a three-year period, because if you're spending it every year, you're just, you're just exempting it. And be one thing, if like, we paid our debt service in our operational budget, but we don't, every one of these goes to an overriding, it just bothers me, and at some point.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
This doesn't, this feels like maintenance, and we have to pay for it, it's operating.
And capital work is easy to spend, because capital budgets, you can bank, and you can spend more like we're doing it this year, you know what I mean? You can kind of bank it, get it more next year, and I will say, operating budget, I'll say, firsthand, is difficult to run on a construction schedule, season, because it's July, June, but when it's this routine, I have a hard time just kind of like.
The only, for construction flexibility, I.
Be more helpful to stay as a capital project?
I know, I know.
Because it's the.
I deal with that myself.
First year base, and we wouldn't be rushed to use it at the end of June?
I would, you know.
They're not going to be exempted.
I wouldn't do it this year.
Well.
But however good an idea it is, I'm not saying wrong with it, but I'm saying, we've got town meeting coming up, we've got the advisory committee hearing coming up soon, and there's only a couple of months left before the end of the fiscal year, realistically, but once you get through winter construction season, I, I don't see anything that can change right now.
I don't think it's that significant, we already have two fifty unspent from last year. I would consider the capital if the debt service for this item came under our operational budget, you know, sort of not exempting it, that's the part that bothers me.
Yeah, but there's a problem with, there's a problem with your argument, which is this, this does recur every year, but the reason it's capital is because we don't pay plenty lane blood every twenty years. So what you're putting in there is a capital asset, it's a long-term asset, opposed to an operating expense that goes away at the end of the year. We paid plenty lane, and next year, you pay Maple Street or whatever it is, but that capital asset is a twenty-year asset, not an operating.
But it's still a same amount distributed among the town, and the, and the improvements are distributed among the town, so one year's Ivy Lane, one year's whatever, and it's still gone.
It's a capital.
There's a way to do that, Eric.
Yeah.
We could talk about it, and try to set.
I'm just not concerned with being exempt, I'm not concerned with being exempt from two and a half, and that's what it is, you're basically taking a routine thing that's spent every single year, distributed among town, and you're exempting it, you're basically making a backdoor way to an operational override with this.
But that's not exactly true either, because right now, you're right, it shows under consent, but we could fund it other way, we could pay it for it with free cash, it's not, this is a capital item, and then you decide how you want to finance it. We could pay for it out of free cash.
So do you want to take it out of this, so it doesn't need a two-thirds vote? It needs two-thirds to bond, if you're going to have the authorization, what do you think the odds are, what do you think the odds are that they're going to actually use their cash? They're going to bond it, and they're going to exempt it, and we're going to vote it as an exemption.
It is a long-term asset, each, each paving project, a twenty-year asset, it gets depreciated over twenty years.
Not all, it's when you do resurfacing, like in a Dover chip, that's like barely a ten-year asset.
Well, but it's not a one-year asset. Anyway, let's not, we're reviewing what's been proposed to us, so I think that we should debate about whether we want to accept it or not, and not try to change our policy.
I think we should be changing it tonight, it's on the do.
I think it's a lot of money that's actually, that just because it's inconvenient to do it at night is, is not a good enough reason.
There's three different questions to be raised. One is, should we change the amount to one fifty? And then the second is, should it be excluded debt or include within the levy? And the third is whether it should be put in the general budget as opposed to.
That's a long term, that was the question, that's just my concern with it, because if you look at the five-year plan, it's proposed every single year, and it's the only thing that's proposed every single year in the five-year plan, other things are distributed in varying amounts over the five years.
Let's hear from Dan on this, you got to get us down off the cliff, that helps here.
So, couple thoughts, I mean, it's a capital item for a couple of reasons, one, it's bondable, which doesn't mean it needs to be excluded debt, but it's, it's bondable. Second thing, if you want to think about a continuum with roadways, from maintenance of filling potholes, to resurfacing, to redoing a road, as you move along that continuum, at some point, and we could argue, we, we could discuss exactly what point, at some point, you move from maintenance to capital, because it becomes a long life, it becomes a long life asset, so I think that's, that's the rationale for calling it capital. How it's financed, and whether it's excluded debt or not, is a separate question. As noted before, calling it capital does give more flexibility to DPW of when they spend the money, and they don't end up with a, use it or lose it at the end of the year kind of, kind of thing. The other, I mean, it's true that putting it as excluded debt is a. kind of uh kind of thing. The other, I mean, it's true that putting it as excluded debt is effectively, you know, kind of an override thing.
And putting it every single year.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Now, if if one were to transition to the operating budget, one, we have things in the operating budget that we'd be paying for that really are long term capital. You know, some portion of that two fifty undoubtedly is things like filling potholes that are maintenance, but some portion of it is capitals. We have things in the operating budget that are capital. And on the bunny slope, I mean, amazingly good news how much that changed from what things looked like in early January. But if two hundred fifty thousand rolled into the operating budget, that bunny slope isn't gonna look as nice. And you know, that's that that that's not say that you can't, that that shouldn't be done. Uh, you know, that just becomes a matter of uh you know, what do you want in the in within the tax levy and subject to top two and a half or 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 not? But it does, by doing that, would reduce future flexibility because it would increase the chances that, you know, we bump into a situation where there need to be consideration of whether or not to do an override for the operating budget. So few thoughts, few thoughts.
And to me, you know, you know, my whole speech here, it's not just about the bunny slope in our situation, but it's also how we compare to surrounding communities, and that affects our property values and so on. We're the fifth highest average taxes paid last year in the end, the entire Commonwealth. And of the top ten communities, the Commonwealth has the lowest property assessments. I'm looking for any opportunities I can to basically be reasonably and fiscally prudent. To say we're not gonna reduce it because it's inconvenient or because it's last minute isn't appropriate to me. I think we gotta look at chances to actually save money, to start to bring ourselves to be more competitive by the communities. When I grew up in this, when I grew up in uh, you know, in this town, we were the second highest property values in the entire state. And we had consistent tax values to other surrounding communities. And that's been flipped largely starting in the mid nineties. That is largely reversed that and we're kind of on this constant spiral. And to say like, oh, we're better than last year or whatever else, well, let's let's look at the table again and see next year how we compare to surrounding communities. I'm I'm gonna guess it's gonna be as I as I as we are now. And we continuously do this weird thing with the with the capital overrides. I mean, does anyone know, like, obviously, communities I know don't do that. Do you know another community? Or do you know another community? Or you, Paul? Where every single debt service is an override?
No, my my town's through maybe a debt exclusion every ten years, one.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying here. So you gotta somewhere, you gotta start somewhere. And to say it's inconvenient, I don't want to change it now. Maybe it's making some kind of statement. I mean, Sean's a great born this. I'm sorry to pick on your stuff here, Sean, but that gives you four hundred thousand dollars to spend with this. And and I think I want some kind of better thought on what to do with this maintenance every single year. I'm gonna, next year, I think I'm still on the board next year. But I'm still gonna give a hard time.
I would only tell you it's not maintenance. Some of it may be maintenance and some of it is replacing. In other words, if we uh do a a loop job on the chillers in this building and next year we buy all new chillers, that's not, that's a different, that's a capital versus an operating.
I get the difference in capital between the lifespan and what do you, but the fact is, you're doing capital every single year all over town with this two fifty. It's effectively operational. Do you get that?
I don't.
It is effective. It's the same value every single year.
We could be buying a new truck every year. We do that with police department. We buy a new police cruiser every year.
I think you're caught up in the semantics. It's sort of the source. You're caught up in the semantics.
Yeah, I get it.
Except that not exempted.
Yeah, you're worried about the semantics of what's called or whatever. It's still two fifty. It's more or less going to the same thing.
We know that, but we buy a police cruiser every year and that's seen capital also. Same thing.
We don't buy a police cruiser every single year.
Well, we have a pattern of two, one, two, one, two, one. It's changing, but very close to that. Yes, we do. Anyway, let's.
We have to operate.
So let's go back to Paul's point. We have.
We have the course.
Let's get this brain in here, okay, guys. We'll go back. First of all, uh do we want to, let's take a few questions that I've fed all three of you have. And the first one is, we want to change roadway management dollar. That's the first question we should answer. We have two fifty. This proposed.
I propose you don't do anything with that, and I don't support it. And give me one shot at Eric. I mean, I don't.
I have no doubt.
Maybe it's a day late.
So you're recommending we don't vote on this one tonight?
I have no doubt you're gonna make a.
He's not gonna tell me a year and take a hundred and fifty. He's right. We got a hundred and fifty six for the fair share amendment.
Yep.
Which was basically another fifty percent off on the chairman.
The only thing we found in the roadway study was that if we don't fund this over a period of time, then you're grinding the roads down from scratch. You're not doing top of.
Exactly, exactly. And we have a lot of stormwater issues that cost a lot of money.
And I'm fully aware of that. I'm also fully aware of our of our tax situation. I just am. And I'm just very cognizant. And it says something, maybe it's because George is not hearing more something, but I'm gonna be the fiscally conservative um selectman, you know.
Well, let's get to the exempt because.
And I have another article I'd rather you know.
All right.
This near the year, your hardest one.
So.
I wanna hear it. Yeah.
We'll get there.
So is there anyone on the select board that'd like to make a motion to alter the DPW uh roadway management?
You're saying don't even vote on it at all?
I'm saying you and me and Jeremy talk at the hearing.
Because otherwise, I'd like to.
Vote on at the hearing.
I'd like to propose one fifty. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say no to two fifty. I'm probably the only one.
That's okay.
But I'm gonna propose it be one fifty. And that's my proposal. I move that we make it one fifty.
All right, and and I'll second that. So we have a second. So do we want to vote on the dollar now?
I understand why you're making it one fifty. I'm sorry.
Well, that's all right.
I'm reducing, I'm reducing it. Should I make it zero?
No, no, no.
I mean, I was very clear and that there is enough need in there. It's clear that's done there. But I think, given the fact that we're getting one fifty from the millionaire's tax, that we have two fifty left from last year that we can spend this year, you know, it's actually, we have, there's a lot of work and it's gonna be a lot, a fair amount of work at the roundabout. You're right. Is one fifty pseudo random? Sure. I'll be making zero if that makes it happier.
So we we have a motion for one fifty and I didn't second it. So that I did that so we can have a vote. So uh, so we do a vote. All in favor of lowering the dollar amount to roadway management to one fifty? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed?
That just passed, so.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. You might have, you might have abstained or something. I didn't know what you were gonna do.
You can call for absence. If you don't get any nays, you can call for absences.
That's all right. We'll just call it a nay. So uh we're not voting on whether how these are borrowing or not. Why do you use that's an advisory decision, not a sort of.
All right, so the question, one one question right now I have is uh since we have just voted that change, does that number get changed for advisory's consideration at their public hearing?
What say you, advisor? Can you have to answer here?
I work for you and I'm gonna change my ass.
Yeah.
That's how it should work.
You can think about it. You don't need to answer tonight, but I would think it would have to change. You know, because we we typically also meet perhaps our before the advisory public hearing so we could discuss it then also.
And this is sort of our meeting before the advisory public.
We have both, but that's true.
I I can just say one thing that'll happen is advisory will have a brief meeting before the public hearing. So this issue can be brought up and somebody on advisory could call a hold on this item and then advisory could vote a new number rather than, you know, if if the two fifty were to stay in the documents, advisory could vote a number.
I haven't known advisory to be opposed to reduction of spending in my in my six years on advisory, but yes.
Yeah, the part of the question was whether.
Yes.
This should be that excluded. I agree with most of my towns that don't would not for this kind of thing to be that excluded. And yeah, it's not an advisory decision. It's the only thing to put the ballot push.
We usually get their advice though.
Yeah, we get their advice.
I guess I would not take that question on individual items here. Seems like we should then at maybe at the end, look at all nine of these and see if there are ones that we don't think should be excluded debt.
Well, he made a good case that this one is a little unusual. That's okay.
I mean, I don't know.
Let's go through, because we know that we're gonna uh eliminate the number six, the Leaven Farms, because we funded that with ARCA funding, right? So let's, why don't we go through all the, we're getting, we gotta be out of here by seven forty, you know, say. So why don't we go through all of the one through nine exempt borrowing capital, project by project, and then decide separately if there are any ones who want to not be. Right now, they're all proposed exempt borrowing. So let's leave them in exempt borrowing at the end. We'll we'll decide on that in aggregate.
Right, there's there's one, the Jameson Field renovation that was, I think, validly questioned by the.
But yeah, but let's go back up. Let's go in order over here. Let's go, let's go to number four, which is storm waters. Any discussion on storm water? You're planning to reduce.
I'm not asking about that one. I'm studying that one. I'm fine. I don't.
If you're voluntary reducing.
You have a proposed amount for that one? You know, you can answer.
It's been a while.
Huh?
Do you think compliance thing, it's kind of.
Do you think you need to be compliant for what is it? What are we, year six now or?
Yeah, how how far, how how much is EPA pushing?
What is it? Catchment investigations? What is it more or less? Um, is it actually structural improvement?
Water quality improvements.
It's an actual ring.
And we, I mean, we have a fair amount of money from the past year. We fall behind on some water quality, so we have no dry weather inspections.
Yeah, it's not.
So what do you propose?
Before we have no wet weather inspections.
Sean, what do you propose is is the right number?
I just don't see any way that's supposed to be here. So I could use two hundred. I don't think we can.
I think it's a good show to reduce symptoms, I think. How much did you use last year? One fifty or two, something like that?
I don't know.
This is all compliant with MS four, right?
Right.
And some of the compliance that you have planned for MS four, you don't really want to do because doesn't all make sense. You're having to do it because of EPA. So how do you approach that? Do you just reduce the funding?
There is some risk, because I'll tell you that the EPA, they're doing benchmark inspections. I don't think they're coming up to any community. They're just looking at what, how you fill your ports. And some communities are like really egregiously not doing anything. You know, I mean, the other ones are going after. I'm not suggesting we should be out of compliance with anything here. But I think if you're within the gray zone, you can be out, you know, you can be heavily within that range.
Exactly, so.
What we're supposed to be doing now is implement any of the classes maybe from plans that we discussed before some time ago, which is, you know, has some timeframe to follow.
So is two hundred eighty thousand worth of work needed to be done this year, is your question?
If we had to prove that to do it, it's there, but I don't know if we have capacity.
This does real engineering, not just the plan. This actually starts surveying and doing topo engineering of a couple of bases.
So it would, it would give us the the evidence that we need to present that would probably be brought.
I'm reluctant to change this on the fly like this. You know, I feel like the arguments we're making are good, but we should.
I mean, this number was arrived at and talked.
We can do this in the advisory session also if we just.
All right, and I'm like.
I don't think we should. I don't think we should change.
Again, the the disadvantage, I mean, it was November when it came up.
Yeah, yeah. Let's keep going. Let's.
I'll support a contingent on Sean providing something.
That's fine. Let's go to the uh, the PFAS thing is next. That's actually one of our James Rina Rosa, I think it's the Tom Harvey uh earmark. But I think we should leave it in here because we don't know if we're gonna get earmarks. So everyone okay with that?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, Leaven Farms, we've already decided we're gonna use ARCA funding, the main ARCA.
I moved to reduce it to zero.
Yeah.
One second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, recreation, any comments on the uh four ninety nine uh tennis and pickleball?
I just love the four ninety nine value.
I don't know. It's the Kmart blue light specials. I don't mind. We've discussed it. It's from a prior meeting, so I don't know if they have a basis.
Dave Welch is is on Zoom if you have any questions for recreation.
Yeah.
Right, it was discussed uh at advisory at some length.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I was just gonna say that at advisory meeting last night, um, you know, there won't be a vote until the public hearing, so this is just impressions. With the impression would be there was support for the pickleball courts, tennis ball courts. And I'd say the impression from the conversation would be on the renovation on item.
Well, you and I discussed that.
Item eight, yeah, on the field for renovation. I think the sense on advisory was that maybe that could wait a year and that could come up next year. So no vote, that won't happen till the public hearing, but that was kind of the sentiment of the meeting and the discussion last night. I think Mary Zersey was there to have be able to provide a bit of extra color.
No, that's that's accurate.
Okay, that sounds good. I opted for board of health from San Kirby instead of advisory. All right, so so that takes our seven and eight.
So is this board want to support seven? I mean, they want to have.
That's fine. I I I would take any comments people have about the pickleball tennis.
Or version support. Or version issues.
Sounds like the pressure's gonna support. It's a, it's a safety issue also. The tennis courts are in bad enough shape that they are at risk of being closed down in the coming year, I think.
And I worry about the funding that they get revenue wise for the summer program to take, so I could take the summer camp somewhere else and use a lot of their. Okay.
So we'll go, unless we're gonna change it or deny it, I'll be part of a mess.
The only one we voted on so far is the roadway management. Recreation number eight is being, we believe that's being reduced to zero, so we don't need to vote on it.
I I guess we don't know that for sure, right? We know that advisory is moving in that direction, but I I don't think recreation had a whole lot of input about that, so I think.
I think, well, choose the president.
Oh, yeah.
If you'd like to.
Um, all right, so I guess Senator Dave, do you have any comments about uh Jameson Field Four in terms of uh how bad it is and uh what would happen if that were to get pushed off for another year?
Yeah, so um I think in terms of priority, in terms of what poses the greatest risks to disruption um to our program in terms of, you know, overall utilization. Uh, by far, the tennis court and pickleball court uh poses the greatest risk to um, you know, safety and risk of closure. The Jameson Field Four renovation, it's marginal, but it's not as acute as what's going on with the courts. And so in other words, um I kind of agree with the overall assessment that um it'd be really difficult to put off the tennis and pickleball court work out of the year. Uh, when we do in preparation for um opening the baseball diamonds for the spring season, if it turns out whether, you know, by virtue of tonight or and or um at the advisory public meeting a week from Saturday, that there's not support for the uh Jameson Field Four renovation, then maybe we'll plan accordingly in terms of um you know, how much we put into the preparation for Jameson Four. So in other words, uh, if we knew that there was gonna be a renovation upcoming, we're not going to spend as much time and money on that on the opening preparation for the spring, but if we know there's not, then we're gonna do our best to make sure that it's safe to plan for another year until that renovation can occur.
Is there a way, David, which you could do a partial expenditure? Like say redo the home plate in the pitcher's mound one year and do the remaining field later, or is it really a composite project?
Um, it's really a composite project and I can't, without getting into a longer discussion, but.
Yeah, that's fine. That's enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So for now, I guess we'll just leave that. We, you know, we think we might get reduced to zero, but we don't know for sure until advisory. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I feel like that's something I would just support and uh we'll see how the chips fall at the advisory here.
All right. And then we have the, we have some language changes we've heard this week from town council regarding how the um history center museum is um described, I think, would be characterized like that, Jerry?
Yeah, that's correct. We we may need to revise the title of this capital.
They're leaning towards, I think, museum, right? Not historic society, but or library or a library.
And reference the location and leave out a reference to the Schurter History Center.
Yeah.
Well, what was printed, you know, and distributed to the voters? We can't change that.
It has been distributed, but it's the warrant. That goes out pretty good April, the warrant. We did should draft warrant, but I don't think it gets printed until after uh advisor hearing, does it? I thought that's one.
No, that's in the advisory report.
So the advisory report is what actually gets mailed to town. The advisory report has the warrant in it with their recommendation.
Right, I'm just trying to, I believe the warrant that I issued. Including all of these items.
But I think um uh and this is something that Mary Wolf has has said multiple times very explicitly. Because these items are all below the line or whatever. They all can be altered.
Yes.
So.
I just wanted to know what was going into the voters.
Well, we have an opinion from town council, but I don't think it's worth debating tonight, but they. Well, we have an opinion from town council, but I don't think it's worth debating tonight, but they feel that there's legal reasons uh, because the town can't fund a nonprofit now. So we can't fund a service society, but we fund a project in a library.
But what I have in my draft warrant says Sherbin History Center and Museum is something here above.
I don't have that town council. I think we should defer to the.
Yes, it's just a heads up that we may need to revise based on.
We got inputs since our last meeting from town council regarding the way to describe. I'm not sure.
So this is wrong, it's not.
I'm not saying it's wrong, but, uh.
That it is likely to change, just like what we're saying, based on town council's inquiry.
The substance of the request and the amount of the request is, is correct.
Yeah.
Just the way that it's presented.
The wording.
The wording of the capital.
I actually, if we have, if you have time tomorrow.
Yeah.
But I know that we support all of these, we said except item six.
And three.
We voted to go down to one fifty and six were making zero only because it's hard to fund.
We already voted on both three and six.
Yeah.
You already voted.
On three and six.
Two, because the other ones, we didn't have any revisions to.
Do you think we should?
One, two, four, five, seven, eight, nine?
Yes.
There you go.
Go ahead.
I'll second that.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? All right, okay. So we're completely aware now, we, I think we should maybe leave it until the advisory hearing whether this is exempt borrowing or not. Do you want to vote on whether this is exempt borrowing? Do you find it's worth police action or not?
I would not.
Yeah.
And, and it seems pretty clear in an article that's called out exempt, so the potential is gonna require two thirds, all those are gonna be potential.
Yes.
I look at the free cash items, um, I love the fact that these are called out and they've passed the police vehicles, these people funded, I think it's going to use free cash for it.
Yes.
And, um, I almost would actually make a motion, I don't know if I'm gonna talk about each one line by line, these seem straightforward. I actually would make a motion to, um, support all five items proposed of the free cash under this article.
Second, second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
There's, there's sort of a quasi capital article, article nine.
It's a small cap.
It's like small cap.
Yeah.
Minus the capital.
Where are you?
These are all below the capital threshold.
Yeah, so.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, excellent, excellent. All right, next time that's capital, now, now Eric had a good proposal, the next, uh, item is the agenda on warrant articles, but you wanna describe your consent agenda concept?
I said we want to, just without going one by one, quickly identify things, things that are discussed and essentially consent the rest of them. I think there really is only a handful of these that we're actually going to, um, really discuss at any kind of length. Um, I'm just looking down at the list here. Already did the capital.
Done most of it. We did operate time, we did capital.
I mean, I, I joke about it, but seriously, where is the? The reservation, so probably this.
That's twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah, but we don't need to worry about the opioid settlement or the use of free cash, right?
The citizens.
CPA, CPA, citizens at the end, that's the last one, which is the longevity paid to elected officials.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not gonna debate that much. Does anyone think they're gonna discussion number sixteen much at all?
All in favor?
I plan to support it, does anyone else think?
Sure, my only question is, I haven't heard anything from personnel board. Why is that? I mean, is there some reason that maybe I shouldn't even bring it up or what?
Uh.
Do we have an opinion from town council about the, the current functionality of the personnel board?
No, but it's something to work on.
Yes. Okay.
It's an issue.
Do we work on?
We, we do have, actually, we have two applications for, that you'll be considering shortly to be appointed to the personnel board.
Okay.
Uh, but the town council has made an opinion about the current two members.
Yeah.
Two members, two five, the two are up and reversion board. So, okay, they are functioning personnel.
It can be free to apply, I think it's, it can be free to apply.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
And I think it would be good just a little.
Yeah.
I assist.
And I, I have some questions about the mechanism of it. I don't know that it's worth extending tonight's meeting to talk about it.
No.
We can always just talk about it at the hearing, at the advisory hearing.
So the petitioner is present as well.
Yeah, and then just, just suggested adding two words, just adding electoral, removing the elected officials.
I'm in favor of it. There's no, there's no issue.
Yeah.
It just seems a little strange that the personnel board that actually exists, it's not waiting.
Yes, that's it.
I think it's somewhat of a function of them not having meetings to discuss.
Yeah.
I think they've. Speaking on their behalf, but I imagine they would support the council.
Right, so it's kind of like.
We're not creating a new policy, we're just slightly, very slightly modifying the London's.
But you understand my question?
I do, I do.
The next one, what?
It is, but there's this circumstance here. Yeah, well, we'll follow up with that.
I mean, it's a question that we arrive, arise.
Yeah, no, it's worth asking. Between now and advisory public hearing where we meet the hour before, we can find out what personnel board thing.
I, I might propose that we withhold voting on article sixteen until we have actual input from the personnel board.
Okay.
That's fine. So then if we hold out, uh, article twelve, which is CPA, article fifteen, which is the zoning bylaw change.
What do you mean by hold out? Do you want to wait?
Well, uh, I think Eric is about to propose that we essentially do consent approval on everything except for the ones that we want to discuss.
Okay, so what's our, including our CPA?
CPA, which is twelve, and then, uh, zoning bylaw, which is fifteen.
Fourteen. There's a fourteen.
There's a fourteen.
Fourteen is important, what's happening?
Sorry, I checked this.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're table.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, that's my bad.
Okay.
All right, so twelve and fourteen.
So which one's fourteen then?
Fourteen is the zoning bylaw.
And that, that, that's tripled one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but yeah. Hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, it affects all town, including that, but yeah.
It does, it does, but it's kinda.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I feel like.
Which is fine, but so once we're not, uh, we're, we're gonna discuss further, I mean, twelve CPA, item fourteen, affordable housing, and I don't think any other one's over.
Yeah, then, so then I guess, but then we're gonna hold, uh, we're gonna hold, yeah, fifteen, I guess.
Exactly, fifteen in your.
So, yeah, we'll exclude that from our consent vote that we're going to make. The citizen's position is actually fifteen? Okay, let's make sure.
Yeah, we're limited.
Yeah, your checklist is not numbered, right?
Yeah. So, so we wanna vote then on those articles in a consent manner that we approve those articles except for CPA and affordable housing?
Actually, can I move?
Go ahead.
Yeah, basically what you just said there, that would basically move to approve everything but what you just said there, twelve, fourteen and fifteen.
Okay.
Second.
Is that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the next is CPA discussion?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, sure. I mean, my opinion is the same as ever before. If I were to be quick, I have a feeling I know how people are gonna align, but, you know, I just feel as though, even though it's not a fitting, it is essentially, you know, a, a, an addition to property taxes, because it's a basic, it's like a tax is there. Well, we shot down a couple lines forward, I don't think it's a good fit within Sherbin, as we've done, um, a fair job with some of these items. I think the amount that comes to the state, so again, reduces more people jump on these things. And, um, you know, again, as we are probably, what I consider ourselves, one of the most tax burdened communities in relation to property values, um, I just don't. I'll let her say that.
Okay. Do you want to have further discussion? I don't know that. Do you want to elaborate on advisory thoughts on community preservation?
Yeah, so, you know, advisory will vote at the public hearing. I would say from the conversation last night, there were, you know, a range of views, probably generally favorable, but a range of views, and I, I wouldn't want to forecast the vote.
Okay, next one.
Any comments on the public?
Uh, no.
I mean, on the.
Last night, last night's meeting, if that's what you meant.
I meant actually right now, but.
I'll make a comment, he just forecasted.
Yeah, yeah.
If I can comment, I, I should say that us did an excellent job laying it out so clearly.
Yeah.
At advisory. Um, I, I'm in favor of this. I take the opposite view from Eric. Our, our tax rate is higher, taxes are high, but we are subsidizing a lot of open space. And having a town that doesn't have a lot of commercial activity, that's what makes the town what it is. And that's part of why people like to live here. So, um, as far as the state matching funds, of course, runs back in the day long ago now, it was under percent, but, and it's gone down as low as eleven, but that was the, the low point. As you said, uh, it's where Boston joined. But since then, the state has made a tremendous effort to bring it up to a more stable thirty some percent. And that's where it is now. Uh, there's no reason to think they're not gonna continue to hold it at that thirty percent match. Because, uh, if it goes back down to eleven percent, the town's gonna opt out, probably, for each other. Uh, so I think it's still a way of generating funds that can offset exactly the capital projects that you may consider to be fluff, but they're not fluff, because people really want the quality of life aspects like the tennis courts, like the town, yes.
And I don't think they're fluff. I don't, I do think, but I think it's just fund them when they come up, when we actually need them, versus this kind of like narrow profile that fits when they can be a presentation. It's just my opinion.
But I think also, also Eric, though, um, you know, I, I understand that the, the taxes are very high. At the end of the day, the level that we're proposing, which is one percent surcharge, um, and then we have added exemptions, right? We've accepted all of the available exemptions, right?
I appreciate it.
First hundred thousand, so certainly the people whose homes are of lower value in town, that's gonna affect them more. And then also, uh, the exemption for anyone who qualifies for low income or moderate income seniors. So I, I think.
And the businesses.
And then a hundred thousand for the businesses as well. So, so realistically, I think that the, the people who are, uh, most financially strapped living in this town are probably either going to not have to pay this at all or pay a significantly lower amount because of the exemption, so that ultimately the average tax bill goes up by a hundred and sixty dollars. And then if we, you know, Jeremy did, uh, you know, the, uh, the analysis, you know, on average over the past twenty five years, we've been spending about two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars each year on capital projects that in his determination would have qualified for CPA funding. And so the amount that we're proposing brings in two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars in CPA funds each year. So it is in keeping with our historical capital spend, essentially. You know, and I, I've identified several things that already are in the current six year capital improvement plan that would qualify and would, you know, you know, collectively, is, is, yeah, is already a lot more than the two hundred and ninety five thousand. So I think that ultimately, if the goal is, we wanna, uh, we don't want to increase the tax burden, I think that we can accomplish that by using CPA. Because we already know what we can spend it on, and when we, if we, if the town approves it, it's only five years. And so if after five years, it's like this is a total failure, we can always revoke it. And we've already identified projects in that five year period that would be eligible and that would probably exhaust the CPA funding. I then did, uh, basically a, a rough calculation. You know, so if you took that two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars that we get on CPA, right? And if, and in, instead of CPA, we say, all right, well, we're spending that on capital projects that we bond, right? So I just kind of picked a twenty year bond, I looked at the current, uh, rate for a AAA municipal bond, and we're hanging on to that AAA rating by thread right now.
Yeah.
Um, and so that two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars over twenty years, it came out to, I believe it was, uh, about twenty thousand dollars per year of debt service. And currently, with the current town valuation, each one, each penny on the tax rate is about eighteen thousand dollars on budget. So it's about one point one cents essentially of the tax rate would be the, the amount that was the bonding. Right, so then over twenty years, on average, each person, each household would be paying two hundred and twenty dollars for that two ninety five compared to paying a hundred and sixty dollars via CPA. So that's about a thirty seven percent difference. So realistically, I mean, it's a, if we view this as a, a limited plan, it's five years and then we can revoke it. We already know what we can spend it on. And essentially, we're saving thirty seven percent on the cost of those projects by adopting CPA right now.
A couple, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Couple questions. First of all, that does offset something, thank you very much. Very thoughtful, absolutely. I do want to clarify.
Advisory checker, re-ears. Taking the broad view.
It's not so much, it is important, the burden on people who can't afford taxes, that is important to me. It's also the competitive nature. It is one of the reasons Sherbin's values are down, because when the average person comes here, they look at how much they can afford between mortgage and the taxes. And we're just shifting in that direction, so the mortgage gets less because the tax burden gets high. So it's a general property values of Sherbin that, that do concern, I do want to say that. And as far as if I hear thing, I would support it if it was a sunset clause, I mean, it automatically expires, and action has to be taken to, to put it back on.
It's like the opt-in, it's in the opt-out.
Yeah, that I would actually support. I don't think, I'm still might vote against it more of a, a like vote against it, meaning I won't advocate strongly at advisory or anything else like that. Uh, but I'll still vote against it if it doesn't do bad, but if it does sunset automatically, then you have to take town meeting action to continue it, that I would support.
I don't know if legally, if you can.
I don't either.
If you can make the motion that way.
Yeah.
Because it, it requires a town meeting vote to revoke it, so I don't know that you can preemptively say, we're effectively voting to revoke it right now, five years in advance, unless we do something different.
I may give it a friendly vote down.
Yeah.
But I, I kind of get.
To address the first point and.
Well, you could stay on sweatboard for five years.
That's true, yes. It's been pointed to the committee.
Put Eric on the CPA.
To address your first point, Eric, and this is sneaky and, uh, it's a runaround, but the CPA, it's a surcharge on the tax bill. If, when people, if people look up the tax bill, it's gonna be, it's just gonna be the bill, it's not gonna include CPA. It's outside of the tax levy, so it does not increase the tax rate.
You see the stats.
So when you look up the stats, if people are potential homeowners, like, you know, they're only gonna see the tax rate, they're only gonna see the average tax bill. The CPA surcharge is separate from that. At, people, people who live here still have to pay it, but it is, it's outside of the tax levy. So.
Perception.
So you will be able to figure that one out if you want to help.
Exactly.
All right, you guys, let's put the court case. I'm gonna, uh, field marshal here, so is there any further discussion on CPA or article twelve? Okay, go ahead.
Somebody wants to speak.
Oh, sorry, Nancy's hand is up.
You wanna do your, are you gonna, the sweatboard speak first? Do you want to, Nancy, go first or you want to? Okay, Nancy, we're deferring to you. On CPA, if that's what you had your hand up for.
Should be good to go, Nancy.
Okay. A couple of things. It, it stuns me that you're even considering this after watching you and advisory struggle so over every penny that goes on the tax rate for the things that we need and want here and now. And the difference between the capital and this is when we approve capital, the project starts, and the people who are paying for it are enjoying the, the benefits of the project. We don't know what the project will be. You're asking people to throw close to three hundred thousand dollars into a bucket for projects that we don't know. We don't win, know when they're gonna happen, and we don't know who's going to be deciding what those projects are. And that's a lot of money that could go toward projects now. You don't call it a tax, but it's coming out of the taxpayer's pocket now. And, and it's sort of a backhanded way of, of, I mean, there, it's not something that someone has a choice about, it gets based on their valuation and it's, it's taken like a tax. So I, I just can't believe that this is any better for Sherbin now than it was the other two times that we considered this. And I think that, um, I, I'm, I follow, um, Eric's position on this. And I think that I'm, I follow Eric's position on this entirely. And I have to say that I am adamantly opposed to this, so much so that I do plan to speak against it at town meeting.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Any other select board comment? Huh? Okay. Oh, you said something?
Just after watching the presentation to advisory yesterday, which I hopeful, kind of working on it for 16th presentation, one of the things that struck me was the point that we are as a town already paying into it. We pay into it with our taxes and we don't receive anything back. So we are paying in a roundabout way because there were two courses, general fund or CPA. And so it would be nice to be part of the program and not just outside of it and not getting any benefit. I think we've already identified a number of projects that would be short-term, ready to go, that make a lot of sense if the town were to adopt this now. That would benefit people who live here now.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a perception issue. In other words, it's not good to have higher taxes, but that just saves us cash flow because we're already approving projects that would have been paid for by CPA funding.
You need your state taxes to pay for this.
Right, yeah. All right, so go ahead, Paul.
Go ahead and vote.
Yes.
When this thing first came up, it was a general article and allowed a range of possibilities. Stephen was very gracious and allowed me to amend it to be the minimal experiment. And on that basis, I can, I can support the community experimenting with this for this five-year period. The advantage to it is the state reimbursement. Even though there's no guarantee what the amount will be, it's more than zero. And if we don't do it, it sounds like we're going to be still spending money. We will have zero contribution. Whereas if we do it, I think the experiment will show that we will be getting some money from the state. And that some money will actually benefit all the taxpayers because we will end up spending less than we would have if we didn't have that state reimbursement. So it's a backhanded way of saying, by adding this money, we're actually benefiting the taxpayers.
That's true.
So with that, I would vote yes on this.
Okay, you want to advise me?
Well, I guess, I think also-
Sorry, I think-
I think also there's a misperception that people don't know what it's going to be spent on. It still comes to town meeting and its allocation is a source of funds.
Yeah.
So your town meeting, people will still have to say whether they want the money to be spent on this or not.
Plus, we already know what the committee makeup is going to be because legally, it has to be at least five people, one of whom has to come from each of these boards. Planning, Affordable Housing Trust, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, and Recreation. And then there can be up to four additional at-large members, one of whom will be Eric. And then that, that committee is also legally required to hold an annual public hearing where they take comments from the public about which types of projects the public feels are necessary. And then, of course, each individual project goes to town meeting for approval, which means it'll go through select board review, it'll go through advisory review. So the entire process is very similar to every other project that the town would take on. It's just that the funding has been predefined. And the key, of course, is, I mean, obviously, the whole reason is that there is a state, a state funding component. I mean, without, without the 30% match, yes, of course, we shouldn't be setting aside any money for a very limited scope of projects sometime in the future. It's the, it's the money from the state is what makes it work.
Okay. Any, you want to vote on this one? There are need to vote on? All right, so you have, one make a motion and one won't make a motion? You make a motion, Paul?
I'm voting to approve.
All right, so second, you got a second? All vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote?
For the meeting.
And for the day, okay, that's good. All right, so the one we have left is, I think, the planning board of affordable housing, which is article number 14.
So I'm the friendly in line on this one. Because for reasons that we had discussed in connection with. The total of the, that town meeting of the planning, site can work, is development.
Yep.
Those, kind of summarize those. If we're going to do a development in this town, this, we'd not, not like what we have in the town. Then I want to see as many affordable units as possible. And that to me is 10 units of affordable housing as opposed to six units of affordable housing.
Well, you should be careful what you say. So that's the project you're speaking about. But the article is 10% versus 15% right now.
I understand.
Yeah. I know, I know. I know where you're getting numbers.
If this was, if this, if this was written in a way that would not apply to any project that has had, had site, you know, affordable prior to the adoption of this bylaw, then I would have no problem going forward. I don't want to go back and retroactively change this project to reduce from 10 to 6. So the way it's written, I can't, I can't support it.
Well, I don't support it because I wouldn't want subsequent ones to not have to go. We make the, the only approved project in the whole future what should be subject to people's analysis. I know that that can risk not getting as many affordable units if people don't want to develop too. I'm in support of 15% myself. Which the town voted to approve, was that a year ago, Mary? Two years ago. Yeah, we've already, the town's already voted on this article two years ago at 15%. So language may be slightly different with the percentage.
It may be helpful if I quickly try to get through a couple lines.
Super quick because we got to get over to-
I know, we started to get over to you. And I'm not going through the whole presentation. I know you sat through it last night and I rambled. And I'm going to try and be real quick, but here's where we're at. 2016, we started exploring exclusionary zoning. We reached out to towns, we started gathering language and had kind of a rough bylaw. We picked it up and put it down and it was affordable. It's for affordable house, right? 2017, we produced our housing production plan. Part of that process, even if I was on that, we, as a housing partnership, we had a townwide grouping. Everyone said, okay, one tool that we need to adopt that we haven't adopted is exclusionary zoning. 2018, 2019, we worked on that. We've studied other towns. We had, we hosted here in Sherborn, a big MAPP forum with a number of experts. We looked at inclusionary zoning and language. And we had a number of people say, tell us about scenarios where they had the tipping point of it gets enacted at five units and so, or at six units. And therefore, they were seeing a lot of five-unit developments or it gets enacted at 10 units. And therefore, they were seeing a lot of nine-unit developments. And so we decided we need to be aggressive. We wanted to ensure that someone had to create affordable housing. And so we decided at the town, at the planning board level, and it was supported by town, to stay with two units. They tripped at two units. As soon as someone built two or more units, they were required to do 10% affordable. It's difficult to build 10% of a house. So therefore, we had a whole calculation for payment and loop. What we found is it hasn't been used. We were warned that it most likely would be too aggressive and would be financially unfeasible. It would, it would put things out of the realm of ability for a developer to utilize it and would push potentially you, push them towards 40B. And I think that's where we potentially are now. And so what we're proposing brings it more in line with surrounding towns. It drops that tipping point, it raises the level of where this gets enacted and at that six units. We're proposing, instead of saying, if you build more, two or more houses, it starts, it goes from six or more houses. So, and it rounds up. So that you have that 10, 10% would be, you now have to build one affordable house or do a payment and loop. And we are proposing dropping that 15% requirement down to 10% because that's more in line with most towns as well as being what MBTA community, multifamily community zoning will require. And it's not allowed to go above 10% without doing a whole financial feasibility analysis. And we know that while we're not bringing forth 3A zoning this year, we have to bring it forth at next town meeting. We are working on making sure we are in line with the new updates. But as far as Meadowbrook comments, town meeting went to vote on that EA zoned project in 2017. The project, this preliminary plan proposed at that time was for 10 units. We made an agreement, EA did not require any affordable.
It was for seven units.
What?
2017, it was for seven units, 10%.
I'm sorry, seven units, 10%, sorry. 10% in number, so, yes, sorry. 10%, seven units for affordable units. EA has no requirement. We have Abbey Road, which is an EA project, and there are zero affordable units in that project. And we worked with the developer in 2017 too because we wanted to at least maintain 10%. The requirement of the state is 10% affordable units. So that's where that 10% is that sweet spot that we'd like to bring us to, to be a standard. I think we're at a different place than we were before. You know, that goes to 2017, as I said, when we were writing this and when we came to town meeting with a version in 2020. We were trying to be more aggressive because we were saying we need to come out with the strongest tool possible to add affordable units. What we've learned in that's life is that didn't work. So we have had no utilization of the affordable housing bylaw. And so, and we have had a lot more 40B applications. And so therefore, the proposal is to bring this into making it more economically feasible to utilize.
Didn't we, didn't we have Pippstang and North Ain? I thought that was three out of 12 units or four.
That's a 40B.
That was a 40B. But he's out of 40B.
Look, I can reply to that from-
Yeah, go ahead.
Which is that 10% is just status quo. But that's what you're supposed to have, 10%.
Yeah.
So if you do a project and you have 10% quo, you're, you're cutting one.
All right.
Doing anything other than the minimum. The point of adding a little more is that what this town needs is some affordable housing. And if you're going to do a project and you've got a developer to vote on later here on this agenda, you know, the developer who's well able to provide this and do it well, they're well financed, they certainly can provide 10 affordable units. And that's what this community needs is more like 10 than 6. So rather than just doing the minimum, I think it makes sense for that project that they retain. Going forward on other projects years ahead.
Well, that's different then. We should, you know, we're really tight on time. What we're voting on is an article that doesn't apply to that. I don't think that's-
It will. When they come for a special commitment.
But we're not voting, we, we're not going to vote on this again and reduce it afterwards. No, because you want this to be high for them and not for anyone else, is what you're sort of saying.
I'm just saying it's a year early.
So you, so you would rather be for-
Let's have this, have this project built at 15 and then let's reduce it to 10.
Well, what about other projects that come in the next 12 months? So you, you're recommending we not have this article at all?
Right, not this year.
Okay.
Or if we're going to have it, then I would, I would amend it. Like, whichever, I'm not going to fight it. I'm going to be in Florida.
Yeah.
To make, make it a minimum. But what I'm saying is that I, I feel pretty comfortable that Toll Brothers can do the 10. And that's what community needs. Once you get that, all that stuff built, you're over 10%. And that's the end of any more 40Bs. So whether there's any more 40Bs coming and whether this is going to cause more 40Bs and there won't be any more 40Bs because we're going to get 10%.
Well, hopefully, let's not go there yet.
The developer is doing that 40B rental, so they will get over 10%. So they are doing something that's going to help us a lot in our affordable housing. I mean, another, if, if, if you're going to argue that Toll Brothers can afford to do this, so we should make them do it, that's not really the point of this article. We're trying to make a level playing field.
Yeah.
And we're up against the MBTA Communities Act. They, I heard a, another presentation from Housing Legal Communities, oh, oldie, ECHD, just two days ago. Where the, the head of that program said that people ask, why is it, why are the affordable units limited at 10%? And he said, because we know that if we make it higher than that, these won't, a developer won't, we won't get the housing built. And so it's true that we need to get to our affordable housing quota. And we will, if this same developer will do both developments. And to me, it seems a reasonable trade-off to, to adjust the bylaw the way we want it to be in the long term and consistent with MBTA, MBTA communities and with all the other towns around, to adjust it now. Even if Toll Brothers has to do three less units in their, in their elderly or age restricted development, they're still getting us 120 affordable units in the other development. So I'm, I'm willing to give them back that, but-
All right, I'm cutting you off. We're really tight on time. We got to clear for more items to get to caucus, okay? So what I hear is you're friendly oppositions to this article and you're friendly in favor of this article, right? And they have-
And we're friendly too.
Any, any other comments on this article before we-
Can I make one quick comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
There's 350 other towns and community, cities in the state. Not one of them is more expensive to build than that, sure.
Yeah.
So to compare us to other towns, if they're having trouble building in Wayland and Framingham and other towns, they're never coming here to build.
Yeah.
A couple of units sold in that one.
I don't think the unit service side factor myself either. What, do you have anything you want to say before you vote?
I probably do, but I don't want to extend the meeting, so it's fine. I'm abstaining.
Okay. So do you want to take a vote? Do you want to make a motion? Or you want to, I sense you were kind of-
I will, please. Are there any more comments from the public?
We don't have time for comments. Well, I think, I'm actually leaning towards, why don't we vote on this at the advisory on this one? It seems like we're split right now. We have pretty much one, two to two with a man out over here. So my section-
I was going to, wow, I was going to step up, but this one's not that big.
My section, my suggestion is that we vote with any person and we can decide this either before advisory or at advisory. That make sense?
Thank you.
All right. All right, so we've handled that one. All right, so we've handled that one and I think the, um, there's no other items in the warrant, so.
Well, not citizens' petition?
Oh, we want to vote on the citizens' petition, which says crap.
I thought we wanted to wait for personal.
You want to make, that's a point.
I would have stepped out a while ago, okay.
All right.
I would have been there by now.
See you there in caucus. All right, so, so now we've, uh, got through-
So can I move that we, uh, file a special legislation for the, yeah, October 17th, and we'll have a special town meeting, and revise, into the project plan, revise, starting with the certain.
Yeah, second. Okay, so what, if people don't know, what we're doing is slightly revising the water district, consider other sources that we're, we're working on negotiating. So it's not really changing the town approved, it's just, uh, uh, revising that document slightly. Uh, so I don't think you need any further discussion. You wanted to vote on that? You can move, you second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I vote for vote, it's not the general. All four, I, they're all one.
Yeah, the only one I have a question on, I, I would like, so yes, I agree with you, but the last one, I'm not in agreement with the prioritization of the, uh, of, we have, the fourth one is our, uh, earmark request.
Okay, so let's follow that one.
Vote on the other.
It's not the giant agenda. I just, one, two, and three, they're all one. I'm pointing to a building inspector, uh, and exhaust or transport progress, two poll.
You second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the last one that I follow the hold on is the budget request sent to Arena de Rosa. I'm in favor of the project list. The only one I would like to move up is the Farm Pond Storm Water and Access improvements. You know, the first critical one is public water supply, which is currently priority number one. But, but I felt that Farm Pond is one of the biggest athletes we have in town. We had a lot of problems two years, not just past, but several before with algae blooms and the lower water level. So I would propose that we move that to number two. The item listed priority five, I would prefer it to be, uh, second.
Can we rank these based on what Paul thinks the legislature likes to approve?
I, I'm not sure. Yeah, I remember we discussed it. Um, the, the thing I would say on the other one, our comment has, I don't, I don't like the COA one simply because it doesn't provide any example. It says it wants an equipment facility to improve outreach. The odds of a state approving it with not, without knowing what those examples of those equipment are is. Odds, I would, you know, say.
I would kick that down too. But Farm Pond up higher.
I, I made Farm Pond two and then I made, uh, I felt that over housing, woodhaven lighting is a safety issue. Item listed here as three, I also kept it as three. That's very important to have lighting at night around, uh, Woodhaven.
Are we all set with the Washington Street, Maple Street intersection?
Well, I, I, I made that five. We have funding, this is additional funding for it. We already have, I don't know, so it's not here, but we have, uh, probably $750,000. We have half a million dollar, whatever it's called, grant, or then we have another $250,000, I think.
Right, the $250,000, this, currently the funding is including $250,000 of chapter 90 funds.
Right.
So if we got an earmark or an earmark, then it goes chapter 90.
Yeah, I, I moved Washington Street to last.
All right, so give your business, so I go with the, the, not the priority list, any order that you-
All right, so I'll, I'll just give you, let me just, here, I think I have to go ahead. If people just have that.
All right, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, all in favor, uh, this is your moment.
Motion to-
Sure.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Diane?